Planning Board meeting will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice published in the Courier News. Notice posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building. Notice made available to the township clerk. Notice sent to the Courier News and the Star Ledger. Mr. Barlow, would you read the open public meeting?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In keeping with the guidelines disseminated by the Department of Community Affairs, the planning board is going forward in this virtual setting through the Zoom platform. Uh, the applicant whose matter is being heard this evening has the log on information for the online meeting platform put forth in their notice. Members of the public who wish to be heard will be afforded an opportunity as if it were an actual physical space. And we've done our best to comply with the DCA guidelines and the open public meetings.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Ms. Buckley.
Mayor Waller. Ms. Corcoran.
Here.
Ms. Saunders.
Here.
Reverend Kenny.
Here.
Mr. Atkins.
Here.
Mr. Foster. Mr. Ahma- uh, Ahmed. Madam Chair.
Here. Um, the flag is over my right shoulder. Could we pledge, uh, recite the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, can we have the professionals sworn in?
Okay. Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony about to give we the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Barlow, are there any changes to our, to our agenda tonight?
Madam Chair, there are no changes to the agenda that I'm aware of.
Okay, item number seven, uh, I'd like the motion to pay the duly audited bills.
Madam Chair, Reverend Kenny, I make the motion that we pay, uh, the bills.
Do we have a second?
Carol Saunders, second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller.
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran.
Yes.
Ms. Saunders.
Yes.
Reverend Kenny.
Yes.
Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes. And item number eight, adoption of resolution to memorialize action taken on January the eleventh.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'd like to memorialize application nineteen PB thirty-six thirty-seven V for extension of time for L'Oreal USA products.
Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller.
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran.
Yes.
Reverend Kenny.
Yes.
Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to memorialize application twenty-two PB twenty-five dash twenty-six V, Yes Pack Inc. for preliminary and final site plan.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Atkins, a second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Waller.
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran.
Yes.
Reverend Kenny.
Yes.
Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to memorialize application twenty-one PB thirty-two slash thirty-three V for extension of time for Chantel Patel and Daxabon Patel.
Do I have a second?
Reverend Kenny, I'll second it.
Roll call.
Excuse me. Mayor Waller.
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran.
Yes.
Reverend Kenny.
Yes.
Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to memorialize application twenty-two PB twenty-two slash twenty-three V for Grand Home Investments LLC Bulk Variance and Minor Subdivision.
Do I have a second?
Thank you, Ms. Corcoran. Mayor Waller.
Roll call, please.
Um, Ms. Corcoran.
Yes.
Reverend Kenny.
Yes.
Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes. Item number nine, adoption of minutes from the regular meeting of January the eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to memorialize adoption of the minutes on the regular meeting of January eleventh of twenty twenty-three.
Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, Reverend Kenny, I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller.
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran.
Yes.
Reverend Kenny.
Yes.
Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes. Item number ten, twenty-one PB slash, uh, dash forty-eight slash forty-nine D U G Incorporated, better known as Gabrielle's.
Thank you, members of the, uh, the board, Madam Chair, board professionals. Um, can everybody hear me?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, my name is Tim Arch. I'm an attorney licensed in the state of New Jersey. I'm here representing UG, uh, Inc., which everybody will know, I think, uh, better as, uh, Gabrielle's Restaurant. Um, uh, this is in, uh, block fifty-five oh one, lot ten point oh five in the RHC zone. Um, we're here tonight, uh, asking for really two very minor, uh, simple things. Um, it might not look that way when you look at all the, the variances that are there, but you'll notice that, um, everyone, I think, except for one, is an existing variance. And I believe the last time this, uh, this site was in front of a board was in two thousand eleven. All these existed at that time. So these are all pre-existing. Um, except for, I believe, the side yard, uh, the, uh, thirty-three point seven foot side yard setback is the only thing that's really being affected by this application. Um, in a nutshell, what you'll see when we, um, uh, when we get into the, uh, the site plan is, uh, the two things we're asking for is on the eastern side of the restaurant. Um, there's outdoor seating currently, and there is a, uh, sort of a temporary, um, covering, al- almost like a, uh, like what you get, like a party rental, uh, or a, a covering that's over that. We are proposing to put in a, uh, a pergola, something that's more, obviously something that's going to be permanent, something that's going to look nicer, or something that's going to provide, uh, that same covering over the outdoor seating. Still be open air, so it's not, it's not a confined or closed-in structure. Um, but we're proposing to put something up that's a little bit nicer. Obviously, outdoor dining isn't going anywhere. It's going to be around for a while, and we want a, a, a feature there that's going to look nice, be aesthetically pleasing, and be better than just, you know, putting up these more, more temporary coverings that a lot of restaurants have out there. So that's our first ask. The other ask is that on the western portion of the restaurant, you'll see, uh, there's a patio area that is, uh, directly adjacent to the, uh, event hall or the banquet hall area. Uh, so when there are events, uh, this is a natural area where people want to, if they need to take a phone call, have a, smoke a cigarette, uh, or, you know, just take a breath of fresh air. Uh, they want to be able to use that area so that, you know, patrons that are using the event set, the event area only can go out and can, and can take a breath of fresh air or a phone call. Um, we're not proposing any service in that area, so I don't want you to think that, um, we're putting out seating there for, you know, for food and, uh, and drink services. This would only be an area that would be for existing patrons that are using the event area to step outside and, uh, you know, get a brush, a breath of fresh air. Currently, you'd have to go through the entire restaurant to the front entrance if you wanted to go outside and take a phone call. Uh, it just seems natural that you'd be able to use that, uh, that small patio area. So if the board were to look favorably on this application, allow us to do that. Um, if, if the board wants to impose a condition that there be no food or drink service to that area, we would certainly be happy to, uh, to comply with that because that's not what we're looking to do. Uh, so those are really the two asks, uh, that, that we're coming, uh, to you, uh, for. Um, as I said, I could go, uh, through, uh, Ms. Corcoran's, uh, list of, um, of the variances, but really those are all existing. We're not, uh, suggesting anything that would change those except for, uh, the ninety-six foot side yard setback. Uh, we are asking for relief. It's a thirty-three point seven foot side yard setback when you take into account the, uh, the covering that we're proposing. Although you'll see that that side yard is, uh, is adjacent to, to another parking lot, so there's really nothing offensive about, uh, about that, uh, that enclosure of the side yard setback a little bit. Um, we do have, uh, uh, I do have my client, uh, Dana Gabrielle, who's here, who, uh, is available to answer any questions if anybody has any, uh, uh, any need for her to testify or any direct questions of her. Um, and my only other witness is, uh, Mr. Rob Murray, who is our civil engineer, uh, who will, uh, go through the site quickly, so you'll be able to orient yourself as to where, um, uh, where these, uh, these areas are. Uh, and then I'll go over the two reports that we have. Um, there are a couple of comments I have on those, but, uh, just, just to tell you, we are going to be complying with the vast majority of things in the report. I just want to put some comments on a couple of things. And those two reports are, we have, uh, uh, Mr. Hinterstein's report dated December twentieth, twenty twenty-two, and we have, um, uh, Mr. Reinerston's report, uh, dated December sixteenth, uh, twenty twenty-two. Uh, so unless there's any, uh, other preliminary issues, um, I think we can go right to, uh, to Mr. Murray, our civil engineer.
Okay, uh, would you call him up and have him sworn in, please?
Yes. Uh, I believe that's Mr. Murray down there. And if I could just ask, uh, um, I know he's listed under as Tim Arch Esquire, but it's Rob, uh, Rob Murray.
Okay, Rob. Mr. Murray, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony about to give we the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
My name is Robert Murray. R O B E R T M U R R A Y.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Murray, uh, are you a licensed, uh, civil engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Uh, just for the benefit of the board, if you can briefly go through, uh, your qualifications and your, uh, your education, uh, so that you can be, uh, admitted as a, as an expert.
Yes, I graduated, uh, Stevenson Institute of Technology in two thousand seventeen with a bachelor's in civil engineering. And I've been a professional engineer for about two years now. I have been in.
Oh, sorry, I was going to ask, Mr. Murray, have you been accepted in front of, uh, in front of the Piscataway Board before?
I have been accepted in front of the zoning board, uh, not the planning board yet.
Um, I would ask that Mr. Murray be accepted as an expert in, uh, civil engineering unless there's other voir dire that, uh, that the board would like to ask.
Um, do the, does the members of the board have any additional questions of Mr. Murray? Uh, I, I, I think that his qualifications will allow him to testify as an expert in this case.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Murray, you've had an opportunity to, uh, to, uh, familiarize yourself with the site and, uh, and the preparation of the, uh, exhibits for tonight. Um, if you can, please just take the floor and, uh, take us over what it is that, uh, we're proposing and, uh, and where those are located.
Okay. I would like to present to you exhibit one A or A one.
Excuse me. And Mr. Barlow, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Murray. Mr. Barlow, I believe this, uh, this is a rendering that wasn't, uh, actually, no, I did submit this to, uh, I think Laura prior to the meeting, um, but we do have it marked as exhibit A one, uh, and we do have it dated as well.
Perfect. Well, we'll reference it as A one then, Mr. Arch.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Murray. You can go now.
Okay. Uh, just to orientate everyone, in this exhibit, north is about up. The lot, the lot we're looking at here is lot ten dot oh five in block fifty-five oh one in the township of Piscataway. The, the lot is northwest of the intersection between Stulton Road and Centennial Avenue. Access to the site is provided on both of these roads. The site is approximately four point nine seven acres and is located entirely within the HC Hotel Conference Center Zone. The north is a church and a Wendy's. To the east is a shopping center. To the west is another shopping center. To the, to the south is an undeveloped site, and the, the site engulfs a lot to the southwest, which is a Burger King and a Dunkin' Donuts. Existing today is a motel and a restaurant. The client seeks to add a pergola, which is about a twenty by forty structure that's about ten and a half feet tall. The parking at the site consists of two hundred and eighty-four spaces existing and proposed where two hundred and eighty are required. As previously stated, the only variance we're looking for is a sharp side yard setback variance, where thirty-three point seven is proposed or fifty-two is previous proposed and ninety-six is required. Other existing non-comformities consist of the front yard setback where eighty feet is, is, is the setback where ninety-six is required and the, the rear yard setback where eighty feet, uh, is, is existing and ninety-six is required. That concludes my testimony.
Thank you. Mr. Uh, Murray, if you can, if, uh, if you don't mind just zooming in, uh, in the restaurant portion there, because you indicated that there's a, um, I guess that L-shaped building there at the top, that's the Motel Six, and none of what we're doing is in any way impacting the motel portion of the property. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, and if you could just use your cursor to highlight where that, uh, that pergola or awning is, uh, proposed to be?
Yes, there's a call out right here for the pergola on the west side of the building. Excuse me, east side.
East side of the building. Okay. And that's, uh, that's, uh, as I said, that was over, um, existing outdoor seating, and actually in that picture there, I believe that is depicting, um, what I was referring to as sort of a more uh, uh, temporary covering or, or the, the type of thing that you would get for like a rental. Is that correct?
Correct.
So the, uh, the, so the idea is that we would be putting in something that is more aesthetically pleasing, more, uh, uh, more, uh, obviously permanent and, uh, and something that just, uh, uh, looks a lot nicer and makes a lot more sense, uh, to be out there all the time. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And now if you can just use your, uh, cursor to highlight the, uh, the western side, that little patio area where we were, um, indicating that was next to the, um, uh, the banquet area or the event area, uh, and that's that there. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And, uh, and, uh, again, uh, was everything that I said in terms of, uh, how, uh, how the client intends to use that property or that portion of the property just as, uh, as basically as an outdoor area for, uh, respite from the, from the event area? Is that, uh, accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay. Uh, now, Rob, I'm going to go through the reports real quickly. I'm going to first just, uh, uh, go through the CME report. And, uh, it's several pages, but I'm going to focus on page number, let me just get there. Uh, page number eight and page number nine. Um, I believe highlighted, when we mark those up, there's comments two, comment three, and on page number nine, comment five. And all of those comments have to do with, um, additional information that, that isn't provided, that has to do with the lot as a whole. And when I say lot as a whole, I mean it, it's both the, um, the restaurant portion and the hotel portion as well, correct?
Right.
Okay. And we are respectfully requesting that we will comply with, with all the other comments in the report, but those three which are calling out and which would require a full site survey, um, which would include not only doing a survey of the front area of the, of the, uh, of the lot, but a full site survey, um, to comply with, uh, these comments, uh, which would be costly and, and rather, um, significant. Uh, we're asking if, if the board would allow us to proceed with just that partial survey that really would only focuses on the front restaurant portion that's along the frontage of the road. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And additionally, in the CME report, I think, uh, I, I think Mr. Reinerston, uh, actually points out that if it's deemed useful by the board in assessing the merits of the application, um, that, uh, he notes that, uh, that some of these items may be more applicable to the Motel Six portion of the property. So it actually, um, not to put words in, uh, Mr. Reinerston's, uh, mouth, but it actually sounds like he sort of anticipated that this is information which, based on the unique, uh, um, the unique makeup of this as having two different uses, might not be really, uh, uh, too relevant for the restaurant or to what we're proposing. Is that correct, Mr. Murray?
Correct.
Okay. I'm going to ask that you go to Mr. Hinterstein's report.
Tim, Kim, I don't mean to interrupt, but just a quick question while we're there. Ms. Corcoran, is, is, is the staff okay with that requested waiver?
Staff is okay with the waiver.
And Tim, just to be clear, it's two, three, and four?
No, it's, uh, I believe it's two. Uh, what did I just say? It is two, three, and five. Sorry.
Two, three, and five.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and Mr. Barlow, if I may interject, I, I, this is a very unusual application, a very unusual site, which is why I said I recommend it. When I say recommend, the, the, uh, the board doesn't have to take it. I mean, basically, we're dealing with a, um, you know, a, an expansion on the, on the one side here, th- that is, that is, uh, uh, we need a side yard setback variance. Nothing else is changing. The most, Motel Six is not changing, so I, I, that's why I phrase it, and thank you, Mr. Arch, for picking that up.
Okay. So Ms. Corcoran's indicated the staff is okay with the waiver request. You, you have no objection to the waiver request either?
No, 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 nothing in my, my review said shall. When I say shall, you, you should. Everything's recommended.
And, and, and Mr. Arch, I, I feel like I'm jumping on you. I just want to confirm, Mr. Murray's employed by Menlo Engineering, correct?
Correct. Yes, that's correct. I, I apologize. I didn't go.
I, I didn't want to assume, but I figured. Okay.
Uh, okay, so focusing then on Mr. And, and I appreciate that, Mr. Reinerston, uh, uh, for your comments there, but focusing now on Mr. Hinterstein's report. Um, we have several different, uh, basically ten or eleven different comments. Um, number one is to provide a breakdown of the restaurant parking should be provided. Mr. Murray, we have no objection to doing that. We'll comply. Is that correct?
Correct.
And number two, sidewalk should be installed along the entire frontage of Centennial Avenue, right away with ramps, crosswalks, uh, being installed, all driveway crossings, and we are, uh, agreeing to comply with that as well. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, if I may, Mr. Arch, can I, may I just, can we talk about the sidewalk issue for a second? Um, as you're aware, this requirement was part of the applicant's two thousand eight approval. Um, they did in fact post a bond for the installation of that sidewalk back in January two thousand ten. Um, to date, the sidewalks have not been installed. So I guess my question is, when does the applicant actually intend to install those sidewalks along that frontage?
Um, I will defer, and then we do have, uh, Ms. Dana, um, uh, Gabrielle, who's here, so I will defer to her on the timing. I do want to just, uh, just for the, the board's sake. Um, there was a, uh, not, not through the fault of the, of the board, the board professionals or any of the, the staff members, a resolution, but there was an understanding on the part of, uh, the client that they thought that performance bond that was being posted was to be used by the township to put in those sidewalks. So they were not, uh, so there was a misunderstanding, and again, on the part of, uh, uh, of us, not, not through the fault of the town, that that, uh, that that bond was an in lieu of payment as opposed to a performance bond. But we, we do, uh, acknowledge that that is a performance bond, and we do uh, intend on putting that in. I know that my client has been having, uh, has had already preliminary discussions, um, uh, with, uh, I believe it's Bellamy, um, uh, contracting, uh, for, for doing that work. Um, but I don't know if there's a specific timeline that we have in place yet. What I would ask is, uh, I, this is, as everybody is aware, this is the worst time for, for construction costs. Um, and so, uh, I know that, that, uh, to, to do that is, is a little difficult. It probably would have been much better to have done it and much less costly to have done it in two thousand eight. Um, so, uh, I will certainly defer to my client if there is a timeframe in which, uh, she believes that it can be done. Uh, but, but I would certainly ask that if we can have, and I know that it's been since two thousand eight, and I understand that, but if we could have a, um, a, a reasonable period of time in order for them to be able to, uh, get the money together to, to, uh, finance that.
And I, I think we do have to put a time, time, you know, we do have to nail down a time on this. I mean, originally I was thinking that no permit should be issued whatsoever for the proposed awning until those sidewalks are installed. Um, if your client needs a year or maybe two years max, maybe that's something that the township can live with, but we certainly don't want another thirteen years to pass by.
A- and we certainly agree, uh, certainly agree with that. If I can suggest, we would be happy to, um, uh, to do this by way of a, perhaps a developer's agreement in terms of, uh, what exactly needs to be, uh, provided in order to, uh, to get a permit so that the pergola can be put up and certainly have a time limit on that. Um, I don't know if, if, I don't know if I feel comfortable necessarily hashing that out right here. Um, but I'm, we're more than, uh, more than happy to be able to do that through, by way of a developer's agreement to set out those timelines.
Okay.
If that's acceptable to, to the board and to the board professionals. Twelve years. I mean, that's all we're looking for. I, I'd need, I wanted to try to make a break, Dawn. I'm sorry.
I'm a reasonable person, Tim.
I, I know. I, I know. The town, the town has been more than reasonable, and we will certainly be able to work out a timeframe, uh, for that. I just, we just want to make sure we have all the information in place.
I personally would be comfortable with a, a developer's agreement, but it certainly is up to the board as well.
Um, is there anything, any other, uh, any other questions or comments in regard to the, uh, um, uh, to the sidewalks, uh, or should I move on, uh, to Mr., the rest of Mr. Hinterstein's report?
Um, you do agree that the ramps and the crosswalks will also be installed, of course.
Yes. Yeah. No, we agree with that. Um, number three, uh, so it says the applicant shall conform with the newly enacted EV charging station regulation. Um, we're not asking for a waiver or anything of this because the board, uh, as the board knows, they can't waive. It's a state statute. Um, what I am, uh, indicating is that this is, this does not fall actually under the, uh, uh, the, the purview or the definition of a, uh, site plan that, that triggers that, uh, state requirement. Um, so obviously, if it did apply to us, we will comply with it and we will, uh, um, conform to it, but I can tell you that the DCA's interpretation has been that it only applies to site plans that are proposing new parking or significantly reconstructed parking. Um, and that's defined by the UCC as reconstructed parking, and that, that's the type of, uh, um, not just, uh, minor repairs or pothole filling or something like that. Um, so respectfully, I don't believe it applies. Um, obviously, if it did, we will comply with it, and we're just stating that we don't believe it does.
And Mr. Arch, that kind of leads me into my last point here, that, um, we, this is the reason I get a, a little, uh, hyper about saying it's a minor site plan or a major site plan. Because the trigger of the EBSE, it has to be a major site plan because it says preliminary and minor, uh, preliminary, little, preliminary and final site plan approval, which means major site plan approval. Under the stat, uh, under the ordinance, anything ten thousand square feet and under is a minor site plan. So this application is a minor site plan. So that and alone, in my opinion, means that EBSE, uh, is not triggered. So if we do, uh, grant approval here, I think we should make clear that we are approving a minor site plan, which actually the last, uh, planning board approval was a minor site plan, so we are consistent with the prior approval.
And I, I.
So, and I defer to Dawn and, and, and the board professionals and Mr. Barlow, but in my opinion, the way it's written, this is not, uh, a, a site plan that, that involves ten thousand square feet. It is a area that is more than ten thousand square feet, but obviously it is, the, the, the development area is much less.
I, I, I would agree. It doesn't apply to this application. We can move on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, so number five, uh, indicating, uh, in Mr. Hinterstein's report indicates that a uh, handicap, uh, accessible ramp needs to be installed, and currently no ramp exists. Um, I, I was. Um, I I was a bit confused by this comment because there is a uh uh there is a ramp in the front of the building. Um, it's hard to see on this uh on this site plan, but right in front of where the awning is, there is a handicap accessible ramp. Uh that leads into there, which is adjacent to the um uh to the handicap spaces. Um, so I don't know if that was a uh uh a miss uh. Uh misindication by Mr. Hinterstein or not, but uh obviously we do have a uh a ramp uh for handicap access into the restaurant. Um, and we're not proposing again any any changes to the uh to the site, uh so. And it it's been quite frankly there for, I believe, about thirty years. Uh without any detriment, um so we would respectfully ask that I think that comment isn't really applicable because there is a. Ramp that is there. I just don't know if maybe it was missed.
Is it, um, Tim, I'm sorry, this is Dawn again. Is it ADA compliant?
Um, that I do not know. Um, I will defer to, uh and I don't know if uh if Mr. Murray knows. Uh off the top of his head whether or not it is or not, um but uh. Uh I'll ask if he does off the top of his head, but I don't know if we have that information currently.
We do not have that information information currently. Look, the run is pretty long. But without any topo, we can't say for certain that it is ADA compliant.
So that's certainly, we'll need confirmation on that.
Okay, we we.
I don't want to just wave that that that, you know, that comment.
W- we're more than happy to look into that uh to to make sure and and perhaps we can just uh. Um, we will, we will uh agree that uh uh. To the town satisfaction that there is sufficient handicap access um to the building. Maybe that's the way to 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 phrase it.
And Tim, I'm sorry, did we go over number four? I'm not sure if we skipped that or not.
Um, I did, and we comply. We will comply with that. I'm sorry, I did, I did skip. I'm gonna skip six for now and just go through seven, eight, and nine, which are all landscaping comments, or sorry, eight, nine, and ten. Uh, nope, sorry, eight, nine, and ten, which are all landscaping comments. Um, they're all sort of. Dancing around landscaping issues and talking about different areas. Um, in general, we will, uh it's it's my general comment with Mr. Hinterstein's landscaping comments that we are happy to work with Mr. Hinterstein to. Make sure that there is appropriate or adequate landscaping, and obviously we will maintain it. Um, so I hope that that is satisfactory to the board. Uh there aren't any real specifics as to as to the exact placement or the types of plants, so. I think the i- idea was to work with Mr. Hinterstein to make sure that everything is satisfactory, and we agree to do that. Um, the last two comments are um six, the appropriate testimony should be provided to uh justify the requested facade signs. Mr. Murray, you, um, there are four facade signs currently existing on the on the property. Is that correct? There's one that's sort of the main facade sign that's on the eastern portion, and then there are three that are part of the. Um, that projecting um front awning area. It says uh Gabrielle's in the front and the two sides. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, and uh based on your experience as a uh as a civil engineer. Uh, and this is a a long centennial row, which is a, which is a pretty wide uh divided uh roadway that's fairly well traveled. Um, uh, uh, is that, is that an accurate way of describing that roadway?
Correct.
And uh and because of that, uh would you say in your opinion that having those signs there both uh aid in a wayfinding. Uh function in order for vehicles to be able to navigate and see that site and be able to turn in appropriately. As well as uh as for safety, uh to be able to navigate and turn in there appropriately. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, and that if somebody were to miss uh those turn-ins because it is a divided uh roadway and because there are multiple lanes, it would require. Uh uh either uh U-turn or uh catching a jug handle or something along those lines to. Be able to double back around, possibly have to do another U-turn because it's on the other side of the street in order to to then safely navigate back to the site. Is that correct?
Correct.
So would you, so based on your experience, would you indicate that those signs are 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 um. Uh necessary for uh for safety and for wayfinding, and in addition to that, they've been there for. Um approximately thirty years, and there's been no indications of any sort of detriment that you're aware of. Is that correct?
Correct.
And again, these signs were present uh 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 to your knowledge back uh in two thousand eight, last time this uh. This site was uh uh presented in front of a board. Is that correct?
Correct.
And I and I think it was either not addressed at that time or there were no issues at that time. Um, uh, based on on my knowledge of the uh of the prior uh prior application. Uh, so the final comment, unless we want to, unless there's any other comments on that.
Um, just one question, Tim, um, that's Dawn Corcoran. So were permits. Um, applied for and obtained for that signage? When this application initially filed, there were more, there was more signage on this building. And then it appears some of it had been removed, so I just want to make sure that the proper permits were obtained for.
Um, I I don't know that off the top of my head if they were not. We certainly will agree to obtain uh any of the proper permits, pay any of the. Appropriate fees uh for those permits as well. We certainly want to make sure that those are all um up there appropriately.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, and I believe the last comment is, uh, no details or information regarding the lighting for the new uh patio area, new canopy were provided. Uh, Mr. Murray, to your knowledge, um uh the western side, the patio that's going to service the. Um, the banquet hall area, we're not proposing any new lighting on that in that area. Is that correct?
Correct.
And in terms of the pergola, we're not proposing any new lighting. Um, although the pergola itself, um which I believe is a co- a commercially uh a prefabricated product, does have. Uh LED lights that are a a part of that. Is that correct, to your knowledge?
Correct, uh LED lights can be attached to the pergola.
Okay, and uh a- and if the board were to look favorably on that, we have no problem providing. Um, information about those LED lights or information about the uh the the commercial product. Uh, or the specifications of that product to the uh satisfaction of the board professionals. Is that correct?
Correct.
Um, I don't believe I have any other questions of Mr. Murray. I believe that is the end of my direct.
Tim, I just had two questions just for clarification. The the pergola, when I think of a pergola, it's it it's like open slats. Is that what's being proposed in the ceiling?
I will defer to Ms. Uh uh I see Dana putting her hand up if we can. If we can just ask her, she knows better than I do.
Yeah, we need to swear her in.
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony about to give weed to truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Sure, uh Dana Gabriel, D A N A, and that's Gabriel, G A B R I E L E.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Gabriel, um, uh, oh, before we get to Mr. Barlow's question, can I, can I just ask, you've heard uh the the everything that I've presented tonight? Is everything that I said accurate? Uh, uh, and is everything that we've agreed to uh accurate in terms of what you're agreeing to?
Yes, and I just want to apologize on behalf of my husband, uh the misunderstanding with that bond. Um, I'm very sorry about that. We actually, together as, you know, as a married couple now, I understand. What that bond was for. There was a misunderstanding and um I did reach out to Joe Bellamy. Um, I do have his estimate and. You know, he's busy, but I know like we're definitely going to get on his list, so my apologies to everybody on that matter.
Uh, so, Ms. Uh uh Gabriel, there was a uh question from Mr. Barlow about describing the pergola and. Is the covering, is it slats? Is it a solid covering? Can you fill us in a little bit on that?
Yes, um, so it is a freestanding pergola and on the top, it's open on the sides and on the top it. There are um louvers that open and close, so when it's snowing, you open it and it will be like the snow just comes to the ground. And then during the summer, when you want to block the sun, um you just close the top.
Okay, so it is, so it has uh the ability to to be a uh total covered or to have that sort of open slot uh um. Ability.
Correct.
Mr. Barlow, does that answer uh your question?
It doesn't, and the other question I had is on the other side, you had made mention. For this area to make a phone call or whatever. Is it that you're just putting in a door there so you can access it as opposed to going through the building? Is that what you meant?
There's actually an existing door there and uh and I'll uh. It it's, it's literally, I think, just that the the uh outdoor. It triggers that it's outdoor seating if you have people that are using it as as an outdoor space, uh so. Uh it just, it 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 has to be brought before the board.
Got you. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
I have no further questions of uh either Ms. Uh Gabriel or uh Mr. Murray. And uh I I don't know if it really bears uh having to sum anything up except to indicate that. Again, I think what we're asking for is is relatively minor, um and I think that uh if you look at. Uh all the the conditions that we are complying with, uh uh. Uh, I think uh we are hopefully satisfying the board, the board professionals. Um, the the restaurant has been a uh an an institution in Piscataway for for thirty years. I hope everybody's had an opportunity to. Either eat there or have an event there, um and it will continue to be, I think, a uh uh an example of a. Uh prosperous and 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 the type of business that that any town would be proud to have. Uh, so I thank you so much uh for listening and and.
Mr. Arch, can I uh ask one thing? Certainly, when I visited the site, it smelled great. I mean, I was so hungry, it was red noon time, but. Um, I I made one comment and I think we all landed that it is not, EVSE is not required. But I did say, is consideration given to uh pro- providing an uh EV station here in in your your restaurant parking? I mean, I'll defer to the board if they think is appropriate. It's not required, but I said consideration be given, so I'll leave it up to the board to consider. What's an EV station? That would be the E- EVSE charging station, elec- electric vehicle. All right, I'm sorry. They're not required to provide one. But, you know, I'm saying that the prior uh ordinance uh did would require one for every fifty, if I recall. If I recall. Um, and and this uh, the EVSE uh requirement of the state supersup- supersedes that, but. I did say, recommend considering. If the board doesn't think it's uh it's appropriate, I'll leave it up to them.
What I would indicate is because of the limited nature of what this application is asking for. And that there really isn't any disturbance of the impervious surfaces of the of the parking lot or of the area in front of the restaurant. Um, I know that that, I know that that putting an EV in there at some point is something that that uh uh is not out of the question. Uh for ownership there and that and that perhaps in the future, if there is a project that is. Um, indicating some sort of disturbance of that area or change uh to that area. I'm sure that that is something that is going to be uh considered at that time, but I would only ask that because of the limited nature of what we're asking for, the installation of a pergola. Um, uh, to 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 require such additional construction on top of that. And it, when we're already doing uh uh a lot of construction along that roadway too, and because construction costs are so high. I would respectfully ask that maybe this is not the the application to require that on. Um, but we would certainly uh consider that for for future applications and for future projects at that site.
Well, um, if you have nothing further, uh are there any other questions from the board on this application?
Mr. Murray, can you unshare your screen, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Reverend Kenny, I have just one question. Is this gonna be uh uh used uh year round? Is probably, uh customers can use that uh four seasons? Madam Dan- Dan, this Dana?
Yeah, um, so I would imagine in the winter when it's like really cold out, no, because it's still opened. Um, but you know, probably till at least October, yeah, like, cause you know, it will block you from getting wet from the rain. But when it's freezing out, you won't, there won't be any heat.
Okay, well, that's the question, because if it got real busy, I don't what your your parking facility, I guess you're in. Compliance with that. If it got real busy during the summer, you'd be able to handle that facility. Uh for parking, that's what I was uh wondering about. But we will know, won't know until that time comes, I guess.
So we, we had a um tents that we were renting, that we had permits for, um, you know, and that's kind of where. We got um the idea with the expense of how expensive the tent was. Or sense, so we did already have it like with the tents and we were always okay.
Okay. Well, that's, that's my question. I know the restaurant, I've been there a few times, so I'm familiar with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other uh members of the board have any questions? Okay, uh Ms. Buckley, would you open, I opened this. To the public for any questions. Would you please see if anyone has any questions?
Anyone in the public, any questions, please raise your hand or we can call on you. No one, Chairwoman?
Thank you, close to the public. Okay, we've heard the application, uh Mr. Arch has made his presentation. Would someone like to propose a motion?
Madam Chair, uh Dawn Corcoran. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the application, subject to the CME report. Uh dated twelve sixteen twenty-two, also subject to the staff report, um dated twelve twenty twenty-two. Um, with the additional condition that there be no food or drink service in the patio. Um, loca- located to the west side of the building. That the applicant agreed to enter into a developer's agreement with regard to the installation of the sidewalks. And that um if permits had not previously been obtained for the facade signage, that they um be required to do so.
Wait here a second.
Dawn, would that also include the waivers for the additional survey?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yep, just wanted to clarify that, sorry.
No, no, thank you.
Madam Chair, Reverend Kenny, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Arch.
Thank you so much. Uh, everybody have a wonderful evening, um, and I hope.
I'm sure we'll enjoy Gabrielle's as much as we always do. Item number eleven, discussion, amendment to application nineteen PB nineteen. SW Investors block fifty-two oh three lots, L one, is that L? One oh one, five point oh two, sixteen point oh one, and nineteen point oh one.
Madam Chair, just briefly, the the, um, I believe Ms. Buckley had provided the previous resolution of approval. It's a minor change to the resolution just removing condition. Um, two C, which was the execution of the financial agreement. Um, it's the, all of the parties um desire to remove that condition. So that's the, that's the only change that's before the board. If anyone has any questions.
Does anyone have any questions or wish to have, you know, it. Expound on uh your concerns? Hearing no objection, would somebody like to make a motion that that change be made?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that that change be made in regards to uh the reports set forth.
Do I hear a second?
Madam Chairman, this is Carol Saunders, I second.
Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Buckley, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran? Yeah. Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes. Well, I think that can close our agenda for tonight. Hope everybody enjoys the weekend, especially Super Bowl, and that we don't eat too much.
And and happy Valentine's Day next week.
Yes, absolutely. Take care. Yeah, good night.